I wonder why you're so mean to me. I wonder why you're so mean to me. I'd be kind to you, woman. What more can I be? I wonder why you treat me the way you do. I wonder why you treat me the way you do. Oh, I'll give you all my money and love, and what more can I do? Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm gonna give you my picture, baby. Put it in a frame. When I'm dead and gone, you can see me just the same. I wonder why you're so mean to me. I'd be kind to you, baby. Kind as a man can be. I wonder why you're so mean to me. I wonder why you're so mean to me. Oh, I'd be kind to you, baby. Kind as a man can be. Sail on. Sail on, my little honey bee, sail on. Sail on. Sail on, my little honey bee, sail on. You're gonna keep on sailing till you lose your happy home. Sail on. Sail on, my little honey bee, sail on. Sail on. Sail on, my little honey bee, sail on. I don't mind you sailing, but please don't sail so long.
I like to call this Tampa City Council Workshop to Order. Instead of an invocation, I know Councilman Gudes was gonna handle that. We're gonna do, we're just gonna have a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and if you could, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Vera.
Here.
Gudes.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dean Felder.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
We have a physical call.
Mr. Shelby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and good morning to the members of Tampa City Council. Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. Today is February 25th of 2021, and we're here this morning for a workshop of City Council. And because of the COVID-19 state of emergency, the workshop will be conducted and is being conducted with a live, in-person quorum of City Council present in City Council chambers. However, in response to the COVID-19 restrictions, members of the public are encouraged to participate virtually through tele, video teleconferencing, which is referred to by Florida statutes and rules as Communications Media Technology, or CMT. The, this meeting is held in accordance with the emergency rules of procedure adopted by City Council by Resolution Number 2020-225, as amended by Resolution Number 220-490. The public and the citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, and view this meeting on cable TV at Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the Internet at tampa.gov/live. Now, members of the public are able to virtually participate in this meeting using CMT by multiple methods besides CMT: written comments by the Internet or web, written comments by mail, leaving a voicemail message for general public comment, and by speaking remotely using CMT from a remote location by preregistering. And again, that information for the public to be able to participate virtually and preregister is available at tampa.gov/citycouncil, one word. Now, for those individuals who do not have access to a communications media device, they have the option of choosing to come to City Council Old City Hall and participate with CMT device, which is available to the public during the meeting at the second floor of Old City Hall, 315 East Kennedy Boulevard. Now, please note, the use of masks and social distancing inside the building are required. Now, council has had the opportunity to have written comments distributed to you and will be made part of the record. Public comments, pre-recorded, remote, or in-person using CMT will be heard at the start of the meeting at the direction of City Council. Written comments, as I said, have been distributed and will be included in the permanent record of the meeting. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, we'll go to public comment. If you are here in person on the second floor, if you would please approach the kiosk. You have three minutes to speak. After each person, we will sanitize the microphone and go on to the next person. So if you are here to speak, please approach the kiosk and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Councilmen. This is Darla Portman, the President of the Tampa PBA. I'm here to make a voice for my police officers, my members. I'm going to tell you that the vast majority of our members are trying to be, are tired of being blamed for other departments that are bad across the country. We act and we, we use ourselves in a professional manner in the city of Tampa. We've always done it that way. We did it before March of last year, and we will continue to do it that way. In Florida, law enforcement has several agencies involved in an officer's discipline. We are the most scrutinized profession in the whole entire country. In the state of Florida, we have Internal Affairs and body-worn cameras. We have the State Attorney's Office that has the Brady's List and also looks at our shootings. CGSTC, the Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission, does our certification. They also impose discipline on top of what the department imposes on officers. We have FDLE that does our shootings and also looks at criminal manners, but we also have the media, the news, and we have the CRB Board. Chapter 943 of the Florida State Statutes establishes the CGSTC and the FDLE Criminal Justice Professional Divisions. Agencies must submit IA findings to the commission. The commission will investigate and impose additional prospective discipline on top of the discipline from the department. The commission can also suspend, revoke, and decertify even if the department wishes to retain the officer. Commission meets more than, meets every three months, and the PC hearings are in between each commission meeting. PC meaning probable cause. The commission also does the curriculum revision and in-service training, continuous revision in the statewide policies and procedures, and training for all officers through their entire career. The vast majority of the citizens of Tampa respect and want the officers in the Tampa Police Department and their neighborhoods, keeping them safe. When crime goes up, property value plummets, businesses leave, jobs are lost, and the revenue decreases, visitors stop coming here. Being a police officer is not a job for everyone. It's mentally and physically tough on the human body. We have to enforce laws, and sometimes doing our job means people get mad. No one likes to get caught violating the law. No one likes to get a ticket, go to jail, or be confronted by the police. We understand that. When you are in, when you're on that side to become the bad guy, we become the bad guys, and you will do whatever it takes to blame it on us. Listen, we have to enforce the law. We have to do our job. Not all officers are bad. We, we try to do what's right for the right reasons. We do make mistakes, and we are human. As the PBA President, I have, I have, I've had to have the issues of telling officers that they have gone off their reservation, they've tarnished the badge, and that we will not defend them. We do not defend bad officers. I have revoked and suspended over 100 officers in the state of Florida since being appointed by Governor DeSantis as a CGSTC Commissioner. We don't protect bad officers in Tampa, and I will not protect bad officers in Florida.
Let her finish with the chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want you guys to know that the mayor has gone very far, and so has Gina, and so has Ursula, to make this fair between us and the ACLU, to give more to the Complaint Review Board or the Citizens Review Board. I just want you guys to understand that we are okay with this proposal. We'll stand behind the city when it comes to this, and listen, our officers just want to work for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Well, we, may I make a request, if I may? Sir, we have Josh Felder, who is a young man from Best Buddies, who's waiting to get a commendation. After live public comment, would you permit us to do his commendation?
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. Next, that's no problem. Next speaker, please. Please state your name, sir.
Councilmembers, good morning. This is Danny Alvarez. I am the Labor Representative for the Tampa Police Menewlin Association, which is the public union that represents all 1,000 retirees, active, and reserve members of the Police Department here in the city of Tampa. I come before you humbly and actually request the possibility of an extension in case I bump up into my time. I know that's allowed upon your approval. I come to you humbly to speak to you today about this review board, and I want to make something extremely clear. The PBA is not against the review board in any way. In fact, they are on the record having endorsed it. It's actually quite the opposite. So any opposition you might see here, or you, any sort of friction you hear, I just think that's not, not very well-founded. What we have here is, I've been on an actual Citizens Review Board for over five years, a police review board, and endorse the, the use of them. I think they have incredible value. I think there's a way for the citizenry to go ahead and take, keep an eye on their government and make sure that everything that's happening is happening correctly. Ladies and gentlemen, the unfortunate part here is what, the, the one thing that's being asked of you today is to change this from a review board to an investigatory arm of the citizens of Tampa. So what they're asking you to do is create a subpoena power that's funded with attorneys so that they can then go outside of the law and investigate on their own, not meaning they're outlaws, I'm meaning outside of the process. When Darla tells you that these, this profession is the most scrutinized, she's correct. Let me list it. They have IA, they've got the city itself, they've got the State Attorney investigating them, they've got grand juries, they've got FDLE, they've got the federal departments when there's any sort of civil injustice goes on, they have the media, which sits here today, they have public interest groups, and they have body cameras. And the, what I bring to you is that every single time there's a request that says, "We want transparency," cops turn around and go, "We want it too," and they, they then submit. You wanted FDLE? They got FDLE. FDLE now investigates the city of Tampa Police Department, and then I'm told, when I'm speaking on a conference with the ACLU, which I respect very, very much, I'm told that's not enough. We can't trust them. You know why? Because they're cops. We can't trust the State Attorney because he's part of the system. We can't trust cameras. Well, well, because they tell the truth. So the unfortunate part is, every single time we get some level of transparency, it's not enough, and we move the ball. Now comes investigations. We want to do something that is unprecedented, and everywhere we go, I'm told, "Well, Danny, we've had these review boards for 10 years in other counties." And then I submit to you, Councilmembers, if that's true, why do those counties continue to have the same problems we do, but they're millions of dollars in, they've got subpoena powers in there, and what are they accomplishing? Today, we have a Citizens Review Board. It, it tells me that it has no bite. The criticism is it has no bite. It has no teeth. Well, I'm telling you that they just don't bite. They have the ability right now to get everything that they want accomplished. They can go out and find out, they can go review. Nothing stops them from investigating and asking questions. This is a grasp that is too far. When does it stop? When do we say, "Listen, we have a system, it's not perfect"? You know why it's not perfect? Because it's made by people, and it's enforced by people, so we've got to check them. Again, we are all for this, this board. We have no problem with the board. What we have is, when are we gonna stop? When do we tell a police officer, "Listen, you've been investigated, you've been found guilty or not guilty, and it ends. At some point, we've got to stop. We're for transparency." Nobody, and I don't care how many times you laugh at it, nobody hates bad cops more than cops, and no one goes after bad cops more than cops. You might think that that's a, a bad statement or that it's wrong, because you can hear the laughter in the board, but what, what we've got, not in the board, but in the, in the, in the diocese out here, out here in the public, but what you've got is a system that overwhelmingly proves that the supermajority of police officers do the right thing. And when they get in trouble, they get in trouble pretty hard. And post-2020, there's nothing, there's nothing that's gonna get away with in this, in this day and age, especially with all of the scrutiny.
Thank you very much, sir.
What we're asking Councilmen is, is for your support. We support this, the mayor's position that she put forward, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Councilmen. James Shaw and Jamie Clappolds with the American Civil Liberties Union, Greater Tampa Chapter. Would it be possible for us to have 10 minutes between the two of us?
Any objection from Council? 10 minutes between the two? They are the ACLU, they're representing the ACLU with the ACLU. Any objection, Council? Then we'll be together in that 10-minute period. All right, go ahead, sir. 10 minutes.
Thank you, sir. First off, we, we are volunteer attorneys. We're not being paid to be here. We, we stepped up because members of the community were, were interested in seeing this change made, and it required a lot of navigation of very complicated legal things that wouldn't, the average layperson wouldn't be able to do. So we've spent hours and hours uncompensated trying to, to guide the City Council on this issue. There are 13 different municipalities in Florida that have some form of Citizens Review Board, or I'm counting 13, there may be more. But I want to read to the Council language from the Daytona Beach ordinance, which says, "This board is created to assist in maintaining the confidence of the cities, citizens, that high-level internal disciplinary investigations of alleged police officer misconduct, regardless of their source, are being thoroughly and objectively investigated and resolved." I can't possibly state it better than that, that the reason to have a Citizens Review Board is to have a board that is comprised of citizens, not members of law enforcement, but members of citizens that can talk to the citizenry and, and about trust in the, the process. That trust is vital to a community. I would point the, the City Council members to the Department of Justice's Ferguson Report, where they spoke about instances like women calling police for, on their domestic partners for, for domestic violence, only to end up getting arrested themselves for violent, violating occupancy certificates that said only two people can live in this apartment, but there are three. Those women said that they would not call the police again in the future. One of them said, "Even if I were being killed, I would not call the police," because they don't trust them. So that makes that a dangerous place to live, where people are afraid to call the police. Where jurors are distrustful of the testimony of a police officer, it can result in a, a possibly dangerous defendant going free. That trust is vital, and it needs to be there between the community and the police, and these civilian review boards help to do that. Now, in the memo that we circulated in footnote one, we have a link to a YouTube video where we synchronized several iPhone videos taken of a protest on Scott Street. In that video, you'll see a police officer walking down the street and just casually spraying teenagers and, and 20-something kids in the face with pepper spray, with absolute confidence that they don't trust the process enough to bring a complaint, and that if they did, nothing would happen to him. It turns out, he was right about the first part. I don't believe anybody made a complaint. So this is not, and it's unfortunate that, that some members can only envision that this would be some kind of mechanism for disciplining officers. This, this board would not be able to discipline officers. All it would be able to do is, is speak to the community about whether they can or can't trust the results of an internal investigation. There will be another shooting. There will be another perceived abuse of authority. There will be another incident that royals this community. What is up for grabs is whether there will also be a voice that can say to the community, "Everybody calm down, this is gonna be investigated, and we are an independent board, we're not controlled by law enforcement, we're not of law enforcement, we are of the citizens. We will take a look at this, and we will tell you if you can trust the result, and you can trust us to do that." But in order for them to be able to do that, it has to be independent. Now, one of the things I wanted to talk about, about the, the draft ordinance, is that it talks about reviewing incidents that have resulted in certain discipline, but I submit to the panel that incidents that don't result in discipline are more troubling to the community and more likely to cause volatility. It, it is not convictions that cause riots, it's acquittals that cause riots. So the, the ordinance does need to be changed, like, to match what other municipalities have, where it's the allegations that are being made that determine whether it's reviewable, not whether or not discipline wasn't, was asserted. The independence is also very necessary in, in terms of how, whether the members are appointed by the mayor or, or by law enforcement. If, if it's not perceived by the public as independent, it can't speak with that voice and say, "Here, you can trust us to tell you whether to trust them." You're gonna see a PowerPoint presentation that points to Orlando and St. Petersburg. Those are the only two in the state where everybody's appointed by the mayor, and they're not truly independent. Of the 13, there's three: Naples, Daytona Beach, and Gainesville, where all the members are appointed by City Council. Key West is similar. There's four appointed by Council, and then those four appoint the other three. To give some more examples, Miami, there's 13, 10 by the city commissioners, two by the mayor, one by the police chief. Miami-Dade County, each commissioner appoints one of 13. Orange County, there's nine, seven appointed, one by each commissioner and two by the sheriff. Fort Lauderdale has nine, three by the chief of, of police, and six by the city commission. Fort Myers has nine, seven by City Council, and one by the mayor. Tampa's unique in that right now, it has, the mayor has half plus one, the proposal is for half minus one. It destroys the independent character of the Citizens Review Board that is necessary for it to have the credibility to speak to the people and say, "You can or you cannot trust the results of this disciplinary process," like the Daytona Beach ordinance says. I'm gonna give the rest of my time to my colleague, Ms. Clappolds.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what James said about, you know, we're volunteer attorneys here, and we've spent a lot of time and effort out of, you know, the limited time that we have because we think this is such an important issue. And I know that the City Attorney's Office has also spent a lot of time working on this, and we do appreciate the progress that we've made with them. But there, as he, as James said, there are just a few more items that we think are really crucial to making sure that this revised ordinance provides a platform for the CRB to function effectively. And the one that I want to talk about is the independent counsel. Right now, the current draft of the ordinance provides for an attorney that works within the City Attorney's Office to advise the CRB, and we appreciate that the latest draft provides that that attorney cannot also advise the Tampa Police Department. So that is, you know, certainly better than what we currently have, but we think that having an outside attorney who does not work for the city in any other capacity is really the most effective way for the council to maintain independence and avoid the likelihood of a conflict of interest, because the CRB's kind of crucial mission is to seek out the truth, even if the truth may expose the city to liability. And so if you have an attorney who, you know, works for the city full-time, and, and the city is, is that attorney's client, then that creates an inherent conflict. And so we think that hiring an outside attorney on a part-time basis, you know, at a, at a reduced hourly rate, would be a very minimal cost to the city, and it would do wonders to provide the CRB with the independence that it needs to function effectively and have credibility in the community. I also want to briefly touch upon the issue of subpoena power. There have been, there's been a lot of misinformation about what the CRB subpoena power would mean, and we're asking for the ordinance to be revised, to provide for the CRB to have subpoena power over civilians, not the Police Department, not any city employee, not the city itself, so that if an incident happens and a Ring Doorbell camera captures it, but that person doesn't want to voluntarily give over that footage, you know, we think the CRB should be able to, to vote on issuing a subpoena for that footage, or if there's a, a civilian witness to, to an incident, or surveillance camera footage. These are the kinds of things that we think are really important, to not foreclose the CRB from being able to collect independently. And being able to collect independent information is crucial, again, for the CRB to be able to function effectively. And Orange County, Broward County, Miami-Dade County, Key West, and the city of Miami all have police oversight bodies that have subpoena power. So this is not unprecedented, this is not a radical idea, this is just getting Tampa in line with a number of other municipalities and counties in the state. And so those are really the main items that we wanted to ask you to please consider incorporating into the revised ordinance, and we, we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
the proposal is for half minus one. It destroys the independent character of the Citizens Review Board that is necessary for it to have the credibility to speak to the people and say, "You can or you cannot trust the results of this disciplinary process," like the Daytona Beach ordinance says. I'm going to give the rest of my time to my colleague, Ms. Clappolds.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what James said about, you know, we're volunteer attorneys here, and we've spent a lot of time and effort out of, you know, the limited time that we have, because we think this is such an important issue. And I know that the city attorney's office has also spent a lot of time working on this, and we do appreciate the progress that we've made with them. But there, as he, as James said, there are just a few more items that we think are really crucial to making sure that this revised ordinance provides a platform for the CRB to function effectively. And the one that I want to talk about is the independent council. Right now, the current draft of the ordinance provides for an attorney that works within the city attorney's office to advise the CRB. And we appreciate that the latest draft provides that that attorney cannot also advise the Tampa Police Department. So that is, you know, certainly better than what we currently have. But we think that having an outside attorney who does not work for the city in any other capacity is really the most effective way for the council to maintain independence and avoid the likelihood of a conflict of interest, because the CRB's kind of crucial mission is to seek out the truth, even if the truth may expose the city to liability. And so if you have an attorney who, you know, works for the city full-time, and the city is that attorney's client, then that creates an inherent conflict. And so we think that hiring an outside attorney on a part-time basis, you know, at a reduced hourly rate, would be a very minimal cost to the city. And it would do wonders to provide the CRB with the independence that it needs to function effectively and have credibility in the community. I also want to briefly touch upon the issue of subpoena power. There have been, there's been a lot of misinformation about what the CRB's subpoena power would mean. And we're asking for the ordinance to be revised, to provide for the CRB to have subpoena power over civilians, not the police department, not any city employee, not the city itself, so that if an incident happens and a Ring Doorbell camera captures it, but that person doesn't want to voluntarily give over that footage, you know, we think the CRB should be able to vote on issuing a subpoena for that footage, or if there's a civilian witness to an incident, or surveillance camera footage. These are the kinds of things that we think are really important to not foreclose the CRB from being able to collect independently. And being able to collect independent information is crucial, again, for the CRB to be able to function effectively. And Orange County, Broward County, Miami-Dade County, Key West, and the city of Miami all have police oversight bodies that have subpoena power. So this is not unprecedented, this is not a radical idea. This is just getting Tampa in line with a number of other municipalities and counties in the state. And so those are really the main items that we wanted to ask you to please consider incorporating into the revised ordinance, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you, and please state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name's Tiffany Hilton. I'm a second-year law student at Stetson. I'm very interested in local politics, and particularly the rehabilitation of the reputation of police among citizens. The Citizens Review Board is a step in the right direction, but it's toothless in its current iteration. By strengthening it through a few changes, we can amplify its impact and bring it closer to its mission statement. You're going to hear a lot of people here today explain how we can transform the CRB into a substantive review board that provides real societal change. Things like establishing an independent attorney for the CRB so they can act free of influence from their employer, who is currently the city of Tampa. Things like reducing the number of appointments made to the board by the mayor. Things like giving the CRB subpoena power. The PBA has been spreading falsehoods that the proposed changes would give the CRB subpoena power over individual officers, but this is not true. This subpoena power would give CRB members power to issue subpoenas to investigate officer-related incidents, and would not extend to individual officers. What I want to explain is why we should strengthen the CRB. In a 19-city study, it was discovered that the Tampa Police Department paid out $3.8 million in settlements between 2006 and 2011. TPD was not number one in the amount of settlement money paid in this study, but what TPD was number one in was the percentage of the settlement money that went to civil rights violations. 99.3% of all settlement money was paid to plaintiffs for the violation of civil rights. 1.8 million has been paid out by TPD since 2016 for the misuse of canines alone. In 2019, 17 cases were vacated due to the misconduct of just three TPD officers. There has been a 24% increase in use of force from 2017 to 2019 under Chief Dugan. The PBA claims that a stronger, more substantive CRB will deter bright candidates from seeking employment with TPD. This has not been the case in cities around Florida who have CRBs with the power that the ACLU is fighting for. Daytona Beach grants all seven appointments to the city commission, and Miami's mayor appoints only two of 13 positions to their board. These changes aren't radical, like the PBA is claiming. These changes just catch us up to the rest of the state. The PBA says these changes will force officers into early retirement and prevent them from doing their jobs. If I drive my car negligently, I am subject to civil action and face investigation. This doesn't make me a worse driver, this makes me a more vigilant, conscious driver. I'm not afraid to drive my car, nor do I cut my trip short, because I'm afraid of criminal or civil investigation. I just tailor my behavior to prevent myself from violating the rights of others. Deterrence is the philosophy behind our laws, and there is no reason that the police officers should be less accountable for their actions than you or I. If we give these investigations some teeth, we benefit everyone in the city of Tampa. We can reduce the amount, the amount of money paid out for settlements, and no matter where you stand, we can all agree that this is a good thing. We can pay officers more and get those bright young recruits. We can provide more comprehensive and better training for police officers. Or, as city councilman John Dingfelter proposed, we can invest a million dollars into developing an alternate crisis response program. We can have another hearing to decide what to spend the money on, but the first and most important step is making these settlements less common because of a stronger bond between TPD and the community they serve. There are arguments that the CRB will cost too much, but I counter that the CRB will save us tons of money. We constantly hear from police officers that if we have nothing to hide, we shouldn't be worried. I propose that the TPD practice what they preach and let the community have a seat at the table for meaningful discussion on how to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker. If you could state your name, sir.
Yes, my name is Clay Daniels. I live 3708 East North Bay, Tampa, Florida. I've been coming up here for 25 years, and y'all have not done anything about the loud music problem. And I feel like if I lived in Davis Island, New Tampa, I would have got a lot of help. And I, you know, I just look at things, Chief Dugan, he the chief, and then you got city council. Y'all have the power to do something about this noise. And if y'all don't do anything about the problem, y'all just as guilty as the one who's causing the problem. I've tried to work very hard with y'all with this problem. Y'all need to do something about this problem. We did petitions, we are complaining, we went to the police department for help. A man can go to the moon, I know y'all can do something about this loud music. This problem is out of control, people can't sleep. I know the chief slept last night, and the mayor, they sleeping good, why can't we sleep? Peoples in Davis Island, New Tampa sleeping, we wants to sleep too. I mean, this is what you call discrimination. This is what you call discrimination when y'all don't do anything about this problem. And I don't like to play the racial card, because I know if I live on Davis Island, New Tampa, I wouldn't have to complain about this problem. It's way out of control. This is environmental, environmental discrimination, and y'all need to do something about this problem. City council said they're going to do something. I asked them to get with the chief, I hadn't heard anything. But like I said, the chief have the power to get with all the, the police department, all the district, they can do something about this noise. Like I said, if they can go to the moon, they can do something about this problem. And that boom, 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 that thumping, it's very annoying. It seem like peoples don't care. See this book here, you see what it says? Peoples don't care. I mean, peoples need to care about other people's feeling. Peoples are paid to do a job, and they pay good money, and they need to do their job and look out for the little man. This noise is out of control, and seem like nobody won't listen. All we hear is talk and no action. And on what we going to take care of this problem? We got to get a police, to deal with number, this problem, find, get this money, to deal with this problem, because y'all can find money, like, y'all can find money for everything else, y'all can find money to hire police for 10 hours to take care of this problem. It's environmental problem, and it's killing people, it's detrimental. And it may not, to y'all, it's not a big deal, but it's a big deal to us, because where we live, that's all we hear. Sleep with earplugs on at night. This noise is out of control, and sometime I think y'all don't listen. I think all the city council members, I know they need to get with the chief, and have the chief to get with the police department, to crack down on this noise. And like I said, if the chief don't do anything about this noise, he just as guilty as the one who's causing the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know item number four, we're going to deal with noise ordinance today. I know that my office did submit some information of an expert who deals with noise. I think that was submitted to legal.
Is it Judy Ellis?
I believe so.
Yes, sir, I have, I have it in front of me.
So I believe, Mr. Daniels, I know that council is working, we hear you, but sometime council is limited in its execution of certain, certain things in the city. And the police chief doesn't work for council, works for the mayor. So he's going to make that clear. And also, I know, Mr. Chairman said he has the information. So we will discuss, Ms. Ellis, and run us through her recommendations, what she's done in other cities. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Dave Simonoff, I'm a Tampa resident. I'm here to talk to you about what it means to the community if you all vote for more independence for the CRB. And basically, what I want to do is tell you what you can say you've done for the people of Tampa when you vote for more independence. First off, you're saying that you believe in more accountability. You're saying that the community itself can have the tools and the independence it needs to make sure that claims are fairly and accurately reviewed in a timely manner. Secondly, you're saying that you believe in the ability of the community to look after its best interests, not for someone else to claim to look after the best interests of the community in its behalf. Third, you're demonstrating trust. You're welcoming independent review. You're saying, basically, what a lot of the law enforcement people here are saying today, that accountability and responsibility are important. You're saying that there is a better way to do it than what we're doing now. You're also saying that you recognize that this will not affect police performance. Nothing being proposed for more independence for the CRB will hinder law enforcement officers from doing their jobs in a timely, responsible, robust, effective manner, and nothing being discussed today will hurt morale. In fact, it might even help, because if I'm a law enforcement officer, I know that my fellow law enforcement officers are going to be held to the same high standards that I want for myself. You're also saying that you recognize this is a best practice in the state of Florida. All over the state, in fact, all over the country, this is a model for what's being done, and it works. Don't ask me, lots of research has been done. You're also saying that you don't want to create a new political entity, and you don't want to raise taxes. This proposal nearly restructures and gives a little bit more teeth to the Citizens Review Board that already exists. Finally, you will not be saying that you have any value judgment on the good work that the TPD does. You are basically not blaming anyone. You're just agreeing with what a lot of their speakers have said, that accountability is important, and there is better way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning, my name is Karen Mooney, and I am a resident of Tampa. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Citizen, the Citizens Review Board. I know there's a lot of discussion about that, so I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed changes, because what a Citizens Review Board means is that communities should and actually have control over the police department, because after all, serve and protect is their motto, right? So we believe that you should actually have control over the police department. So some of the proposed changes that I'm speaking out in support of is decreasing the appointments made by the mayor, because having five seats, there's going to be a lack of trust in the public. And as the members of the ACLU pointed out earlier, there's already several CRBs in the state of Florida that are doing what's being proposed. So it's not, as they mentioned, it's not a radical request. Making the attorney independent, because obviously, this is a conflict of interest. To have an assistant city attorney as an advisor, again, that's going to be conflict of interest, lack of trust from the community. Also, the support of adding subpoena power for law, non-law enforcement members, as again, several CRBs in the state of Florida are already doing this. And, let's see, we want to limit former law enforcement participation in the Citizens Review Board, you know, make it as non-bias as possible. And also allow for CRB to investigate matters with a 50% vote, and not limit matters to certain discipline. So these proposed changes would enhance public trust of the TPD, which I think we can all agree that after what's happened in the year 2020, needs some fixing and repairing of the community trust. So these proposals would help in that direction. It would give the public a meaningful voice. And there are some concerns that there would be decreased morale and deterrence of recruitment for law enforcement, but there's no evidence of this. So there's claims being made that there is no evidence for. So in the end, law enforcement should not judge their own, let people of the, the people of Tampa have a meaningful seat at the table, because in the end, this benefits the community and the police. And I'll just reiterate what the law student said, it would save a lot of money too. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please.
Yes, sir. Ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, my name's Angel DeAngelo, born and raised right here in Tampa, Florida. I'm here to elevate what past speakers have said. You know, when I was in elementary school right here in Tampa, Florida, Officer Friendly used to tell us, "If you have nothing to hide, then you have nothing to worry about." That's the mantra of the police department, but yet they're so afraid of just a sliver of accountability, a sliver. Honestly, this barely scratches the surface to what we need. I think we need, as a society and as a community, to stay on the message of refund the community. We've talked about this last year, and the city council elected not to do so. We're going to continue this fight, honestly, you should know that by now. We need healthcare, we need housing, we need food, we need services, we need alternative programs not connected to TPD, not co-response programs with Grace Point. We need programs like COHoots that will go out there and solve these problems, because what the policing system is doing is causing recidivism, and it's causing the problems to ignite, because that's what they do best. The very least this city council can do is approve these meager changes that are going to do just a very small step towards possibility of transparency, and still won't do enough. We have to fight a lot harder. This city council is serving, has a choice of what side of history they want to be. Right now, you, and the PBA, and the Tampa Police Department, most especially Chief Dugan, are guardians of oppression. So you can decide what future you want to have. All February, this month, being Black History Month, you want to talk about Dr. King. And when Vanessa McCleary was here, a former housing and development manager, "I wish we could have done more to help you, I wish we could have done more to help you." You could, it's called the budget, which you have control over. Instead, you elected to give TPD 13 million more, when the people clearly asked for you to move 30 million into the community. So defund the police, refund the community, and for the policing that we have, most of them don't even live here, including Dugan, regulate that CRB to where we have more transparency and the ability. This is not the most scrutinized profession. PBA is obviously living in a fantasy land, they always have. Community patriots painted a back-the-blue blob, whatever, on our streets illegally. No accountability, and then they go to Washington DC, tagged, going to Washington DC on January 5th. Restorative Justice Coalition and the activists on the ground, People's Safety Coalition, we have never attempted an insurrection, but these people have, and they're PBA's biggest supporters. Why is that? Because they're guardians of white supremacy, patriarchy, cis heterosexism, all of the isms that you don't like hearing about and you're tired of us talking about, is never going to change until we do something radically different. Giving the CRB more power is not the radical change we need, but it is change that I do support, until we get the change that we need. So I hope the city council will at least do the right thing this time, and know that we will be out here demanding refund the community this budget season, and we're not going to stop until it's done, or until the breath is out of my body.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
Hey, guys, how are you? Jeff Hawks. I represent a group called the Community Patriots, here in town, about 5,000 strong. Have any of you ever been to a protest? Have any, any of you ever been down on the street when they blocked the roads? I believe the organization that's behind these changes represented some of those people that disrupted our communities. Straw Park, Joe, you live in South Tampa, John, what about Swan and Howard, the CVS? It's time you guys represented all of the citizens. I represent several groups that want you to stand by the law, stand by the Constitution, back the blue. We strongly urge you to consider the mayor's proposal and stand with the police union. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, next speaker. All right. Go ahead, sir, please state your name.
Good morning, council. This is Kelly Benjamin. I still haven't quite figured out how to get my glasses not to fog up when I'm speaking. For those of you who watched the Super Bowl, there was a marked push to make sure that the spectators of that event understood the message of racial justice, despite what they did to Colin Kaepernick, to understand that the history in this country, when it comes to equality and justice, still has a long, long road. The spirit of that message was the spirit that this movement for a Citizen Review Board began with over five years ago. We have seen a lot of back and forth on a lot of the particulars in regards to this ordinance, but at its essence, we are asking for a voice for the community in the way that they are police, some accountability, independence, and transparency, like cities all across the nation and all across our state have done, so that we can have a better relationship between law enforcement and the community. And this is the community that the DOJ confirms that has a pattern of discriminatory practices on the part of law enforcement in this community. This also being, you know, the tail end of Black History Month, we know that we have issues in our community, the passionate voices that you heard, and I know many of you are scholars of history on this council right now, I know many of you were out there in the streets during last summer's protests, after the tragedy with George Floyd. This is what this community has been passionately asking for, and taking to the streets, getting tear gas to have, and this is, as was stated by other people before me, this is just a very first step to begin to have that voice and accountability. We need one that is independent, the one that was set up five years ago, as we know, that was stacked with the mayor's appointees, did not do justice to the spirit of this board. And that is why Councilman Gould requested that we review this and create a board that actually works for our community as originally intended. I urge you today to, you know, council, you deserve the appointments on this board, and we're moving forward with the process, and I know that there's been a great deal of work on both sides to come to a consensus on where we need to be for this community. And I know many of you are also, you know, getting tired. We've been at this for, going on nine months now. We could have had a child. Let's move forward, let's get this created today that works for our community, so we won't have to revisit this, when the next tragedy occurs, and we still don't have enough accountability for our community. I think everyone, for their time, consideration, and all of your hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good morning. Yvette Lewis, president of the NAACP Hillsborough County Branch, and a resident of Tampa. Happy Black History Month. Am I human? The civil rights movement started in 1954 because of the inhumane treatment of African-Americans. They endured prejudices, beatings, discrimination, jailed, and denied basic rights. We, African-Americans, did not start this fight. We did not start biking while black. We did not start driving while black. We did not start illegal searches, or we did not start stop and frisk. We did not ask to be slammed to the ground, we did not ask to be put in the bike of a police car for hours, we did not ask to be shot for holding a hairbrush or a cellphone. We did not start this fight with Tampa Police Department. According to the history, the civil rights movement ended in 1968. Yet, it is sad that I stand before Tampa City Council demanding and begging for African-Americans to be treated with respect. I can honestly say, actually, African-Americans feared their lives long before Tampa Police Department legalized that phrase. I guess you can say African-Americans started, "I fear my life." Again, we did not start this with Tampa Police Department. The injustices started within their house. It is time for change, it is time for due process, it is time for accountability, it is time for the city of Tampa to truly end the civil rights movement in Tampa. Change has got to come. Am I human?
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please.
Men tis not Tampa, Florida. Nasty, stinking racist dog. Nothing more, nothing less. Let's start this way. Y'all always have a problem with what I dress, what I wear, how I wear, whatsoever, but the first lady came up here representing the police union or something, have her breast out. Why y'all not censoring her? All right? It's a nice sight, but still, it just shows how discrimination work. Then the other people come up here representing the ACLU, they get to speak double and triple. You understand? But I had another young black man here with me, I can't get to speak on the same public comments. Nasty, stinking racist dogs. And we're not just talking about the dogs the police put on you, we talking about the dogs that's sitting upstairs, the nasty, stinking racist dogs that's sitting upstairs, that say you can't even address them a certain way, like they gods, like they Greek gods, or Roman gods, or something. Garbage, nothing more, nothing less. Y'all around here begging for a police board. The police is the Ku Klux Klan, 600,000 bicycle stops, 600,000 bicycle stops, inside our community, and y'all around here begging for a police review board. No. You understand? Jonas Joseph, shot over 62 times, right here around a few blocks from my house. Yeah, nasty, stinking racist dogs. The Tampa Police Department, the KKK, that's where it start. Hillsborough County, Lynch capital of the state of Florida, Lynch capital of the South at one time. Y'all want black people to keep begging and coming down here, and just on our knees, and whatsoever succumbing to this nonsense. Tampa Police Department, for years, right gang, ye boy, city, spraying pepper spray throughout the crowd, every time club fuel is over with. Y'all ain't did one damn thing about it. You understand? And some of y'all are career politicians. Some of y'all are career politicians, and y'all trying to get black people to bind to that propaganda. We don't have to bind to it. Black people don't have to accept that. And when we go and do a little price adjustment and whatsoever, and resistance, y'all call it rioting and looting and stealing and shoplifting. But when white people do it, y'all call it insurrection. When white people say, "We have to do something about our rights, about white rights, which we already have," y'all call it insurrection. When we do it, when we say, "There's something wrong about this, there's something wrong about this," then we have to come and beg for a police review board. Do what y'all have to do, because we African people in the streets, we live this life, we're going to do what we have to do. It's just, it's sickening to see, but it's so honorable to see young white people, young white people down here saying, "Hey, we see the light." You understand? We've been seeing discrimination, I've been seeing discrimination from the third grade. White child, raise their hands, don't raise their hands and speak. Oh, Johnny, it's not done that way. Black child, do it, go take your black ass to the office. Yeah, you in trouble. You about to be suspended, you about to be expelled, for doing the same thing white people doing. Black people, we deserve rights, and we deserve justice. And Orlando Goos, we hope that you look out for our rights, and the other people up there that's doing some honorable things. We finally have a city council that's looking decent now, and we would like y'all to do something to really represent what the people is saying that we need, not what a few select individuals talking about, "We have 1,000 employees," and there's no. Y'all have 1,000 employees that works for the taxpayers. Oh, we going to quit our jobs, they going to quit their, who in the hell going to quit their jobs in pandemic?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Wu, and that's a tough act to follow. Kind of nervous, so I just want to start by saying, to the council, I watched the June 4th City Council on Facebook Live, and the comments that Councilman Maniscalco made about his ride-along, and entering a home that had just, you know, somebody had just passed away, and that really touched my heart, because I felt like, you know, you get the subtleties of what that profession deals with. But I'm here in support of the ACLU proposal, because I believe it will restore transparency for the Tampa Police Department. Surely, the mayor's administration foresaw the subpoena power issue coming up when she announced this review board change, as, you know, an answer to some of the social justice protests she saw. But Pandora's box has been opened, and I want to speak today to share the impacts of leaving this metaphorical box unopened for as long as we have. I joined the ACLU because they are a nonpartisan group, and I'm passionate about equality, so much so that I helped my sister get into her law enforcement career, where she ultimately met her husband. There's nothing extreme about my family. Since November, there have been several instances where the police union leadership has attacked the ACLU and the press. Before the last CRB discussion, they asked their followers to "support the PBA fighting against this ACLU." That was an awkward dinner conversation. Just last week, the union president published an op-ed in the Tampa Bay Times. Tampa must keep politics out of policing, the union president explains why it opposes radical changes to the Citizens Review Board. Radical changes. Council, my question to you is, what audience is that op-ed for? It would appear that the headline is for freedom groups that you keep hearing from. It's only been 50 days since the DC insurrection. Many of these freedom individuals do not believe in the validity of that event. Just yesterday, a US senator repeated lies about it. I wouldn't be working with this organization if I didn't have the love and support of my family. Now, city council, you may not have authority over what the police union says and writes, but you do have control over what you legitimize. If you play into the farce that giving an accountability board authority to request documents is an extreme political decision, then that will validate the freedom supporters who are proven to be impressionable when called upon by their leaders. I imagine some may be nervous to be the council person to bring this proposal up for a vote. I was nervous coming here today. My husband's parents immigrated here from China in the 70s, and 50 days ago, we watched a man waving a thin blue line flag beat a police officer. So, please, proceed with the ACLU proposal. By continuing to delay, the city is allowing these lies of radical reform to continue.
Thank you very much. All right, I believe we have four more speakers in person.
Good morning, council. My name is Gretchen Catherine. I'm a Tampa native and resident, and I am, yes, an attorney. I guess the PBA has referred to me as an activist attorney, but I'm actually a small business owner. And you can call me an activist, because I love this community, and I will speak out, I will do what's needed, to make this community a better place. Just last year, my business, just like everybody else who had a small business in Tampa, for the most part, our businesses were forced to close. During the time that my business was closed, and over the summer, and continuing even to this morning, last year, I put in over 500 hours of community work, of volunteer work. And for those of you who work a 40-hour-a-week job, that's three months of unpaid labor. And it cost me over $200,000 worth of clients. But I did it, because I believe in this community, and because I will fight for what is right. The PBA has spread lies about those of us that volunteer with ACLU, who have volunteered to take on this project. None of us are compensated by the ACLU. I won't even be compensated for my parking outside today. We do this because we love this community, and we love the Constitution, and we love the Bill of Rights. None of us work for the ACLU. That's a funny thing. But because of Ms. Portman's op-eds and her social media posts, I have been getting threats on my business, on social media, because I dare to stand up to the Tampa Police Department, and I dare to ask for accountability. I don't believe that when the citizens voted and elected Jane Castor as mayor, that they intended to have a dictatorship run the city of Tampa. But we currently have Mayor Castor, former police chief, who, from people that I speak to and hear from inside the Police Department, believe she's still running the Police Department. So, she's running the city, she's running the Police Department, now she wants to run the CRB, which is supposed to be a civilian panel to review police indiscretions. I was on the ground this summer. I saw people getting hit by rubber bullets. I had tear gas or canisters of gas sprayed at me and others. I was there, I saw it, and to this day, during meetings, Tampa Police Department has denied using gas or shooting rubber bullets. So, we're going to let them run their own review panel, we're going to let them not be accountable to anybody except themselves. So, or they can be accountable to the mayor, who was the chief of police, now mayor, dictator of Greater Tampa Bay, and apparently is threatening all of councils, so everybody's afraid to speak out, to make a motion, to vote for an effective CRB. This has been going on since, I think, June, when we first started meeting. I was on the mayor's task force. It went nowhere. Citizens complained, the police officers that were present said, "Oh, no, that doesn't happen, that isolated incident." I went through the TPD bias training. One city council member was there that I saw. I sat on the NAACP's Police Chiefs Panel, where Sheriff Cronister, all the police chiefs at Hillsborough County, except for Tampa International Airport, were on this panel. Chief Dugan and Darla Portman arrived for the first meeting, said, "Everything's perfect. We do everything wonderful. We don't need to get together with the other chiefs and the sheriff to create a comprehensive plan to help equal rights, to help fight the discrimination in our county," and they never showed up to another meeting.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. I ask that you please vote on this, stop delaying it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, please state your name.
My name is Fred Rock. I live in South Tampa, have lived there for approximately 30-plus years. I am also representing a group, Community Patriots of Tampa. And as I was driving into today's meeting and driving down Bay Shore Boulevard, I noticed so many traffic lights that didn't used to be there. But the reason they were put there was because someone felt as though there was a need for safety. I look at today, and I see people still crossing Bay Shore to get to the other side, and not utilizing the resources that were put in place for their safety. utilizing the resources that were put in place for their safety. But that really doesn't speak, per se, to the exact meeting we're having today. It has to do with us believing that our mayor, who has served as chief of police and now serves as mayor, and her team are well-advised. They have had boots on the ground. They understand this particular condition or situation far better than most any one of us here today. I'm speaking on their behalf and hoping that you trust in our Constitution that we don't add another layer of enforcement or laws that aren't really needed, just like so many of those extra lights that are now on Bay Shore Boulevard that so many people aren't utilizing. I think the troublemakers that are out there are going to always be there. Hopefully, though, they will be reduced. And our police force, the majority of them are extraordinarily young men and women doing their part, and we need to show them support. Because if our house catches on fire, if our car gets broken into, if we are hurt, the first person we turn to, first group, are the police. And I truly believe that most all of them are doing the very best they can equally across racial lines. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Mary Fernandez. I took a day off to be here. I feel it's of utmost importance to support the police department. I have lived in the city of Tampa for many, many years. And we have seen a lot of unrestfulness in other parts of the country while we in the city of Tampa have been able to keep a very good, orderly, and stable protection for the citizens. I'm very proud of the police department of the city of Tampa and I support the mayor's proposal and I stand with the police union. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Zee Smith. I'd like to stand with the police union in support of Mayor Castor's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in person for public comment? If not, we are gonna go to this commendation for item one and then continue on to the registered public speakers. I believe that was the last speaker in person. Just want to double-check. Okay. All right, having said that, Councilman Viera, this was your motion. We have a commendation to Joshua Felder. I believe he's joining us virtually, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. If we can bring Mr. Felder online and Councilman Viera, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Josh, you there, buddy?
Yes, I am here.
Great. There you go. Sorry, I'm just finding my notes here, Josh. I don't know where they're at. Well, that's fine. Josh, good to see you, buddy. Can we see you there?
There's the thing. Earlier, I texted that my audio is working, but I'm having difficulties working the camera.
Do you need a minute, buddy? Or do you want us to come back to you? Because I'd love... I know we'd all love to see your face, Josh, if you can do that.
Yeah, I'm working on it. I've been working on it for a while.
Okay, that's fine. Well, Josh, I mean, do you have someone there who can help you with the camera, buddy?
My mother could help me. She's here.
Okay, Josh. How about this? Mister Chair, can we come back to Josh? We'll give him... Josh, we'll give you, with the permission of our chair, five minutes to get your camera because I know we'd love to have you on and see you and whatnot. And may we come back to this gentleman in a couple of minutes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, we shall return. So we'll give you five minutes, Josh. Thank you, buddy. Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll come back. It's 10:10. We'll come back at 10:15. We have some public comments that registered speakers online. I believe the first name is Jennifer Hart.
That is correct, Chair. The first person is Jennifer Hart. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes to speak.
Jennifer Hart. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
My name's Jennifer Hart. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and also with the Democratic Progressive Caucus of Tampa Bay. I'd like to speak to you today in support of a strong citizens' review board in Tampa. I believe this is necessary in order to ensure real justice in Tampa Bay. These are the steps we need to start taking. Some of the things I would like to call for is that a new citizens' review board can receive complaints directly from the public, not through the police department, that there are 10 members appointed by the council and one from the NAACP and no appointments from the mayor. The CRB needs subpoena power to investigate complaints from the community and also its own independent attorney. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jean Stroemeyer. If you're on the line, please unmute yourself and we will... You may speak, ma'am. Jean Stroemeyer?
She is on the line and is unmuted, but we cannot hear her. Hello? There you are. Okay. Y'all gotta give us some warning. I mean, get up for two seconds and then you get called. Whew, lordy. Okay. Hi, y'all. Wait, before we start, you know, because I just learned something while people were speaking today, so I had to add to. So I would like another 30 seconds, please.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh, man, I just got up. Okay. My name is Jean Stroemeyer, citizen of Tampa for 50 years. Most of us here, except for maybe one council member, has never been a cop. We don't know what it's like to make life and death decisions or to walk out of our homes every day, not knowing if we are going to walk back in the door to see our loved ones again. This is a walk our officers take on a daily basis for the safety of others, for you and me. They choose this career. Why? Why on earth would anyone do that? Imagine thinking every day you go to work could be your last day. Not your last day on the job, but your last day on earth. What kind of life is that? For most of us, it's not a life at all. These officers are being scrutinized by superiors, captains, corporals, lieutenants. Then you have chief of police, mayor, criminal justice standards and training commission, state attorney, FDLC, the citizens' review board, but most importantly, by we, the people. Sign me up for that job. HE, double hockey sticks, no. Not a chance ever for the average citizen. Now, besides all the above, someone had the bright idea to bring political groups into our city police department for another layer of scrutiny. That's a bad idea on so many levels. If you bring in the NAACP, the ACLU, then you need to bring in Christian coalitions and other groups to balance this out, including retired law enforcement officers. I've read the entire document and see so many causes for concern and potential for abuse and overreach. Multiple places, it says, to review cases of interest to the community. But which cases are of interest to the community? Who determines which cases? What... Why that case? Because will it bring more political... The box? Yeah, those cases. Review closed cases. What about the privacy of the cop? Leaks of the content? They participate... They want to participate in hiring. Another step to sign up for a dangerous job. Complaint tracking. So besides scrutinization above, anyone with a special interest can file a complaint. Now, the cop has double, quadruple jeopardy? The membership, no special interest political group should be involved in our police department. It talks about diversity, which is overplayed to the nth degree. Individually, we love diversity, but mobs are all racist. I have not read the police officer's Bill of Rights, but I have read the US Bill of Rights. Amendment 4 reads, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." The entire CRB seems to overstep the rights of anyone with a job or not, especially our officers. They want subpoena power over individual citizens? That's insane and a violation of our civil rights. Just because I may have a ring doorbell, you want to invade our privacy and bring me into a criminal investigation? That's what they do in communist countries. That is insane and very dangerous precedent and overreach to our citizens. Don't do it. So considering there's such strong special interests poking around our community, family in this manner, I ask city council to let this matter of overreach die or it'll cause the slow death of our brave police officers. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker we have is Ryan Barak.
Thank you, councilman and Chair and members of the council. My name is Ryan Barak. I'm a resident of the city of Tampa. I'm also a civil rights and employment attorney. I've also represented hundreds of police officers and secured millions of dollars in benefits for them. I would like to address two points today. First, the civilian review board should have an independent legal advisor. Second, the civilian review board should have subpoena power. With respect to the independent legal advisor, an attorney that reports to the board is vital to ensure that they are giving independent, unbiased legal advice. If you have an attorney that is part of the city attorney's office, inevitably, there's going to be a conflict that arises between their obligations to their client, the city, and the obligations to their client, the civilian review board. This is the same reason why the number of independent or multi-county agencies or other boards all have independent attorneys. Reason why Hart has a board that is independent, reason why the Tampa Bay Water has a lawyer that is independent. There's nothing unusual or inappropriate about having independent attorney advise that board. It's normal. It's what it should be. With respect to subpoena power, allowing the board to subpoena witnesses is important to ensure that they are able to conduct fair and efficient investigations. I would hazard a guess that there will be almost no need to actually use that power. But the mere existence of that power shows that the city takes citizen review very seriously. And in the extraordinary case where it is necessary, it allows for a mechanism to do that. So again, I would encourage this council to, one, allow the civilian review board to have an independent legal counsel, legal advisor, and also to allow it to have subpoena power. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Next is Nina Tatlock.
Chair, Nina Tatlock is not on... Well, she's on the line, but her audio is enabled, so we need for disabled... We need for her to log back in and enable her audio pan.
Okay.
We want to mark Rodriguez.
Before we do, Mister... Councilman Viera, if we can go back to Mr. Felder.
Sure.
To see if his camera was working so we can do the commendation.
You there, Josh? We'll wait for him to get back, I guess. I don't know how that works.
Do we have Josh Felder on the line for the commendation? And if we do, if we could bring him on? Huh? Okay. All right. In the meantime, we'll go to... Was it Mark Rodriguez, the next speaker?
That is correct.
All right. Mark Rodriguez, if you're on the line, go ahead.
Mr. Rodriguez, you would need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Good morning, council members. Appreciate the time. Yeah, my name is Mark Rodriguez. I'm a resident of the city of Tampa and I'm here to echo the previous comments of other concerned citizens in support of a real, independent citizen review board. In my mind, this is not an anti-police measure. This is a measure that is about basic concepts and standards of accountability and transparency. We all, I'm sure, understand that institutions cannot credibly inspect or oversee or police themselves, including the police. For example, I don't think many of us would consider it very credible if 10, 20 years ago, the Nike Corporation were to come to us and produce a report saying that, you know, the working conditions and the wages in the sweatshops that produce our sneakers are lovely and are great. No one would believe that. I think that here, sitting here today in the city of Tampa, we have a chance at real systemic change. But this civilian review board has to be independent. It has to be controlled by civilians and independent from the mayor, from the city, and from the police. I think this is about basic accountability. I think this is something that already exists in many other cities across Florida and across the country. And especially right now, right? As this country and this state sits in a moment of reckoning about racial justice in this country, about the history and the practice of policing in this country, I think this is really a chance for Tampa to step up, to respond to that moment. And if we want to be a cosmopolitan and a leading city moving forward, I think this measure is really the least we can do. Thank you very much, council members.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, I have Paris Gergenes.
Paris Gergenes, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to comment on the noise level in Tampa, particularly parking wreck, a subject that I and my neighbors have spoken a few times. But I'd like to respond to the comments that the representative of the police department said at the November 7th meeting. He stated that the speakers in parking wreck had been removed from the patio, which is true. However, that did not help the situation. To compensate, parking wreck has increased the volume of the speakers inside and opened the doors, which permits to put the same noise level as before. What that has done is because of the increased volume, now the bass is much higher and it said it vibrates across the building where we cannot rest, day or night, because they're open, especially on weekends, all day and at 3:00 in the morning. The gentleman stated that parking wreck is working with the association to mitigate the process. Well, it's been five months now and the process is not even together. In fact, it's gotten worse. The last issue is that he stated that there were not as many calls or complaints. I don't know where he got this information, but I know that my neighbors and I have been calling constantly as late as Saturday. I know for certain at least two calls, one at midnight and one about 2:00 in the morning because we were not able to sleep all night. So I'm going to ask that something be done with the situation. And I have one more comment to make. This is in regard to the policy that is legal to have a noise level up to 84 decibels, but over 85 decibels is not legal. Can anyone really, when they're sleeping or sitting in the house, tell the difference between an 84 and 85 decibel? Is 84 any less problematic to people that live here around them? I would suggest we look at a different method of determining what something's loud because it can be heard 200, 300, 500 feet away when someone is sleeping. Loud is loud. Thank you very much for the clear time.
Thank you very much. Next is... Well, before we go to the next speaker, do we have Mr. Felder's audio and video up for the commendation?
And Mister Chair, thank you for that, sir. I don't believe that it is. I'm having my assistant Brandon work on that and she'll text me when he's ready.
Very good.
I thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir. Kenton Bradford is our next speaker. If Kenton Bradford is on the line, please unmute yourself.
Chair, Kenton Bradford did not log on as of yet. We'll move on to Rozelle Coffey. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself.
Rozelle Coffey?
Go ahead, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Earlier, the PBA president mentioned that even the police make mistakes and that's something I think we can all agree on. My question to the council is, when an employee makes a mistake, is it not appropriate that the employer sees that they are held accountable for their actions? The citizens of Tampa deserve to have that power. Police policing themselves is a clear abuse of authority. In its current state, what is the point of CRB if there's no real independence or power? And like... And like the noise complaint gentleman said earlier, if man can land on the moon, why can't we sleep in peace? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next is Justin Coffey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, council members. I appreciate this discussion today. My name is Justin Coffey. I'm a resident of Tampa, and I'm calling to express my support for the ACLU's request of our citizen board. I believe that in order for the citizen review board to truly possess teeth, the board should be able to investigate complaints independently, have the subpoena, the ability to subpoena witnesses, recommend discipline, and also review discipline, disciplinary actions. And I believe that something we all can agree on is that this needs to be a truly independent process in order for true accountability to be brought upon us here in Tampa. I think that transparency needs to be coupled with accountability, and we have had many talks about transparency with the use of body cams, but not enough about accountability here in the city of Tampa. Civilian oversight promises more equitable policing because it is a process by which non-police community members can regularly provide input to the police department operations. I also want to mention that I was a member of the mayor's task force on community policing, and from that task force, the main two pillars, the first being building trust and legitimacy, and the second being policy and oversight, I think really relate to this discussion that we're having today. So I think that it would behoove the council to really hear out today what the members of the ACLU and the supporters are requesting. And I would also like to mention that here in Tampa, like many speakers before me have said, we have a chance to serve as the model city for the rest of the nation. Recently, I came across the news that the city of Orlando has taken the initiative to kickstart a mental health crisis intervention program beginning this weekend. And as I'm sure you're all aware, we have a similar effort here in the city of Tampa, but it's been teased for quite a long time. So let us not be late to a more equitable society. Cities across the country have made efforts to increase transparency and accountability, and Tampa is definitely more capable of doing the same. It's not a matter of capability, but willingness. These types of changes are long overdue, and I hope that the right decision is made, which is granting subpoena power for the citizen review board so that it functions as a power instead of just something toothless. So we want the real thing, and I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you very much. Before we continue on the call-in, we had one more person down on the second floor. If they would come up to the kiosk for public comment, then we'll continue on, just to keep things moving. To the speaker that is there on the second floor that walked in, please come to the kiosk for a public comment. And now I'm being told it's three people total. After this, we stop the in-person and we continue on the phone. Public comment started at 9:00. If you're here to speak in person, please approach the kiosk. If you're here to speak and you're on the second floor, please come to the kiosk. You said there were three people there?
Yes, they're coming up from the first floor, so just one second.
Okay, then we'll continue on with Craig Birchfield, who's on the line. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. As it was stated, my name is Craig Birchfield. I'm here as a citizen of Tampa and also as a member of Tampa Democratic Socialists of America. Earlier, PBA President Darla Portman described the policing profession as the most scrutinized profession in America. Yes, good, okay. Any institution with the ability to end and disrupt life, whether through physical violence or structural violence through a broken carceral system, should be scrutinized endlessly. If it's too hard to serve under these conditions, I for one am a fan of defunding and moving resources to more humane responses to crisis. The police exist to protect private property and those who own it, above all else. Whatever platitudes the PBA would like to present, that's the way the system is designed. No amount of good intentions, and I won't be unreasonable, I'm sure there are good intentions, no amount of good intentions overrides this fundamental truth. And that's why we need an empowered CRB board independent of the state. Not only does the institution of policing exist to protect private property, but apparently it also exists to protect itself, to hold the so-called thin blue line. We've heard the rallying cry, "Blue Lives Matter." There are no blue lives. It's a job. But there are black lives. There are no blue lives, but there are lives of those who are houseless and in need. There are no blue lives, but there was Dominic Mulkey. This is why it's critical for citizens to have greater oversight. Someone needs to be looking out for the rest of us. There are criticisms that the measure proposed will only serve to politicize the CRB. I call BS. Policing is inherently political, and right now, those with political power, specifically the mayor, a former cop, have too much power over people to appoint members to the board. I'm asking members of City Council to vote in favor of expanding CRB, to vote for a greater voice from people who are affected most by policing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are the people that are on the second floor ready to go and come to the kiosk?
Not yet, Chair. I just need another minute, please.
Okay. We go to Sharon Graham, who's next on our call-in. If you would unmute yourself, go ahead, Sharon Graham.
Good morning, council members. Thank you. My name is Sharon Graham, and I am a business owner in Tampa. We choose this to live here and facilitate jobs and build a team serving this community because of its beauty and potential. I am here to strongly support the ACLU's proposal, which includes reducing the number of mayoral appointments to the CRB, making the CRB attorney independent instead of discretionary, adding subpoena power for members who are not law enforcement, adding a provision that lets the CRB investigate a matter with a 50% vote of the CRB that would not be limited only to matters where, quote, "certain discipline" is involved, and limiting the number of former law enforcement that participate in the CRB. Law enforcement officers, organizations, and their representatives cannot investigate themselves without a conflict of interest. Law enforcement officers, including the mayor, cannot investigate, including through proxy appointments of CRB members and a city attorney, cannot investigate themselves without a conflict of interest. Independent investigation and accountability are required to uphold the public trust. This trust has been eroded through a repeated lack of justice and abuse of power, including here in the city of Tampa, which has been documented by independent legal observers and other witnesses, of which I am one. Conflicts of interest are a clear violation of the ethical principles upon which our, the citizens' government must operate. Our government, to be of, by, and for the people, must be accountable to the people. Earlier here today, you heard that law enforcement is the most investigated profession and that such standards are scrutiny and abuse. I assure you that increased accountability is not scrutiny or abuse, it is simply holding those sworn to protect and serve to the same legal standards of accountability that we citizens are held to. You also heard that, quote, "If these changes are made, where will it stop?" end quote. I promise that our advocacy will not stop until justice is served and no one is above accountability to the law. The proposed changes today are not radical. They will save the city money from settlements and serve as a much-needed step to build the public trust. I urge your support of this ACLU proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Bridget Maloney. If you would unmute yourself, go ahead, Bridget Maloney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes. Hi, City Council. Thank you for listening to everyone today and your months of hard work on this. I just, I want to approach this with honesty. I believe that what we're all fighting for is transparency. And our first speaker mentioned something about people being paid to be here, ACLU being paid, and what's interesting is that I believe that her position is paid to defend the police officers and protect them, and I do respect that. I've actually had encounters with Tampa police during mental health crises where they've assisted me. However, I'm talking to you in support of these proposed changes because I'm a graduate from University of Tampa. I'm 24 years old, and I went to a protest on Scott Street that was peaceful, and I went with my mom and my old roommates. And I watched Tampa police follow people to their cars. And it wasn't just that they followed them to their cars and they pepper sprayed them, it was the fact that they did it so confidently. It was the fact that they almost did it for sport, and that's not exaggerating, because that was just one of many instances that we saw that. And I won't tell you over and over the many instances that I went, where I witnessed police brutality firsthand, where my friends were shot with these rubber bullets. What I will tell you is that they acted that day on Scott Street with the idea that they were not going to be held accountable for their actions. And they weren't. They were right, and it emboldened them. And what you've heard from earlier speakers is that you need to stand with the community. And I agree, you do. What you don't need to do is stand with the PBA or stand with the ACLU. When you say things like, "Stand with the PBA, stand with the mayor, back the blue," those undertones show that they're all in the same. When Mayor Castor was the ex-police chief, and now she oversees Chief Dugan, and now she wants control over the CRB completely, that's just a blatant conflict of interest. It doesn't make sense. And you see these proposals in front of you that have been talked about over and over again, reviewed by legal entities. I know that you all know that this is the right move to make. And when I hear things like, "The media is against us," and, you know, "These activist groups are against us," but I only read one scathing opinion piece in Tampa Bay Times, and it was by our first speaker. So what I'm asking is that you don't think of this as PBA versus ACLU, and you think about the many groups and the many people. This is my first time speaking, but it's certainly not my first time listening to all of you and to all of the speakers. You sat for hours hearing many young community members, and I will tell you one thing. I for one will never call Tampa police, even if I am in danger. And that's a problem. Like someone said earlier, the police are the first ones to call when we are in danger, when we are hurt, et cetera, et cetera. And I know plenty of people, because of what they witnessed on Scott Street, because of how they were treated, they will not call the police. That is a public safety issue. That's terrifying. It should not be the case that I am worried to call the police, or anyone is worried to call the police, because they are fearful of the repercussions. And they worry about officers, their private information being leaked, or, you know, being removed from office. And if officers want this accountability and transparency, then get rid of the bad officers. They should want this. That's what we want.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, Devin Cheves.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Felder is ready, so after the next speaker, I would request, please.
All right, before we go to Devin, let's, because the gentleman has been having technical issues. Councilman Viera, yes, sir, we can bring Josh Felder on the line and go ahead.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. You there, Josh?
Yes, sir, I am here.
Great. And it's a shame that Mr. Felder can't be here with us. I, since you can't, I wanted to show folks who are watching, I guess we can't really see this, but I have some pictures of you. This is of young Josh Felder, who's 23 years old, I believe. I met Josh through Tampa Bay Best Buddies, a wonderful organization. Oh, and they're zooming in, thank you. Founded by the Shriver family some time ago, and Josh became, and here he is with this, the Super Bowl, the first person with a developmental or intellectual or neurological disability to dance at the Super Bowl. And Josh is here from Tampa. Put some more. This is Josh at Best Buddies event. There he is, right there. God bless him, looking very dapper there. There's Josh with his USF outfit, and in fact, that's where I met Josh, at USF Best Buddies. And here's Josh again. And then this, because I do this, because you can't see Josh. And here's Josh with his friend Kelly Howard, who actually spoke to Tampa City Council a few years ago and is also with Best Buddies. But we wanted to honor Josh because of his work and just really being a local trailblazer when it comes to sporting events, et cetera. Josh is an individual who has many, many dancing heroes in his life, including the late Michael Jackson, among many, many others. And Josh auditioned and was accepted to participate in the Super Bowl halftime show, again, making him the first person with such a disability to participate in the Super Bowl. And I didn't know it. I think Josh kept it a secret from a lot of his friends, but when I read it, I smiled big, and it made me really, really happy, because I know how much heart it came in. Over 96 million people watched Josh, as well as 200 other talented dancers, perform at the halftime show. Josh is, again, a young man who's 23 years old, is intellectually disabled, and he has what he calls a photographic memory, which credited him to become a good dancer. His tremendous abilities has helped him break down barriers for those with special needs through our community, and for that, we honor Josh with a Tampa City Council commendation. And Josh, I will be meeting you, if I may, in person to give you that Tampa City Council commendation. But we just wanted to give this time where council members could honor you, Josh, for the work that you did at the Super Bowl, to honor you and your friends and your family. And also, Josh, just to let your experience serve as a message and as a purpose for all the community. You know, this is such an important issue to a lot of people, myself included. My oldest brother Juan is intellectually disabled, and so it's a very important issue to me and my family. So when I see you do that, Josh, I know the importance that that brings to everybody in the community and the message that it sends, that even though you may have a disability, whether it's an intellectual disability, whether it's autism, whether it's Down Syndrome, whether it's cerebral palsy, that you can still dream dreams and you can still do great things. And what great things are is very subjective. For some people, being able to have their kids sit in a movie, or in a church, or in a religious service is a great thing. Graduating from high school may be, like me graduating from Harvard Law School, you know, a great thing. I didn't go to Harvard, by the way. But that's a great thing. Everybody, their achievements are subjective, but when we look at Josh and what he's done and being active at USF Best Buddies, where I got to meet him, and dancing at the Super Bowl, imagine that. Imagine Josh going to audition, to dance at the Super Bowl, and then being chosen, and then going on TV and just surprising the heck out of all of us who knew him, seeing him up there. It just made me really, really happy. So for that, we wanted to present Josh with a Tampa City Council commendation, which I will be giving you, Josh, at a separate time. And if other council members wish to speak, and then Josh, you'll have a chance. And Jaclyn Clark with Tampa Bay Best Buddies was going to be here, but unfortunately had a scheduling conflict when we ran a little bit later, but she just wanted to be here representing Tampa Bay Best Buddies, which is a wonderful organization, serves with so many groups like Special Olympics, both of which came from the Kennedy family, Shriver-Kennedy family, by the way. So thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citra, I saw your hand up, and Councilman Goode's.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Councilman Viera, thank you for calling our attention to the wonderful thing that this young man has accomplished. There are many people, let alone children, adults, that would like to have been seen by millions and millions of people across our world. Josh, your hard work, your dedication, and your talent got you that moment in history, and I am so proud of you. Congratulations, Josh. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goode's and Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, once again, Mr. Viera has brought a young person to this council who has accomplished something that many would like to do and be a part of. I too know about that, dealing with young people all my life, giving opportunity, youth football, kids who have disabilities wanting to play, and giving them an outlet to be able to play and to also cheer as well when we formulate these special needs. when we formulated these special needs chilling program, you know, youth football and American football. It's a great, great experience for young people who want to be involved and be a part. Glad to be a part of the initiative that this council, the mayor, and the chair, myself participated at Freedom Park yesterday, McFarland Park. That was a great thing to see a young lady who was ecstatic about being able to be a part and being able to play with her friends and being able to show others that we can work together, and everyone with disabilities and those who do not can play together in the same place and have a great atmosphere. So Josh, thank you for what you've done. Thank you for being a trailblazer and showing America who you are, what you are, and continue to strive, my friend.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Hi, Josh. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Hey, how you doing? So I'm Dingfelder, and you're Josh Felder. Maybe, maybe a long time ago, we were related, but I'm sure our dance skills are far apart. But on a serious note, when I watched that Super Bowl dance routine, I was like so impressed. Especially, you know, in light of the virtual situation and all the practicing, difficulty in practicing and everything else that went on. That was such a cool dance routine. And I didn't understand half of it when you guys went into the, into the mirrored chamber and everything. That was really awesome. But anyway, Councilman Vera, thank you so much for bringing Josh and his accomplishments to our attention. We appreciate that so much. And Josh, we appreciate you so much. And we wish you all the best, and I know great things will come in your life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If not, I'll wrap it up. Josh, thank you for inspiring so many of us. Certainly, you've heard council members speak, the impact that you've made. And congratulations for performing there at the, at the Super Bowl halftime show. I watched the show, and I thought it was fantastic, being a fan of the weekend. I really appreciate and enjoy his music. I was thinking he's like, in many ways, a modern-day Michael Jackson. There will be another, there will never be another Michael Jackson. But if you look at his performance, and, you know, you were part of it. So the symbolism and everything that goes behind it, there's a meaning behind everything that he does. So you were part of it. You were part of history. Millions of people watched you. You should be proud of yourself. We're certainly very proud of you, of being part of this very special moment right here in the city of Tampa, followed by a great Super Bowl win. So thank you very much, sir.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, if Mr. Felder wants to say anything?
Yes, so I would like to say that I really do appreciate all the support and all the great comments during the whole Super Bowl. I was not only just, you know, enjoying the experience, but I also wanted to, you know, prove to society that rather if you have a disability, that you can actually let it define you. I say, if you want to accomplish something in life, I just say, just go for it.
Thank you very much, sir.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I also wanted to highlight that I remember seeing Josh during the 2019 campaign. He went to a mayoral, I think it was a mayoral function, and he asked, he stood up and he asked all the candidates running for mayor, and back then, I think there were about 380 of them, but what they're going to do for people with disabilities like him. So Josh has what our Jewish brothers and sisters call chutzpah. So congratulations, Josh. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. We'll continue with public comment. We have Devin Cheves on the line. Go ahead. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Devin Cheves. My pronouns are she-be. And I am speaking on behalf of, in support of what other folks have laid support in as far as a positive civilian review board, as far as the ACLU is naming. I just want to say, a lot of folks have already said most of the things as far as how we can specifically improve the civilian review board. But I actually want to share my lived experience. Because I've heard some things, and sitting here, listening to folks who are saying that the police is doing everything right, that there's nothing wrong. I have lived experiences, right, literally here in Tampa. A month after Breonna Taylor was murdered in her home, sleeping in her bed, had a negative interaction with a police officer, I will never forget his name or face, Officer E. Trevino, he was not wearing a mask, he was not six feet away. This is also, mind you, we're in a pandemic. And simply because I yelled "Black Lives Matter" out of my car, mind you, I live in East Tampa. I see a lot of police presence in my area and a lot of things that are not okay, that are not right, the way that houseless folks are being treated, the way that people who look like me are being treated. I have been followed, right, trailed by police, reading my tag. My stuff is up to date. I know what they're doing, though, because I have lived in communities that have been over policed, right? And my parents grew up in the civil rights, right? They're in their 70s. I've heard these stories of how to interact with police and what to do and what not to do from that era. And so I just want to name that I feel like a lot of what we're hearing is, maybe it's just one perspective, but I think it's really important to listen to all of the perspectives that are being laid out here, right? Because it is very clear, you cannot erase the lived experiences of Black and Brown people for generations, right? Folks have even mentioned that, you know, when you look at the, how, sorry, I'm just very, very emotionally touched right now because to hear that, that we're doing this much to make very small changes. Mind you, these are not radical changes that we're asking for with the civilian review board. This is only going to increase accountability and increase transparency. But I'll be honest as well and say, for me personally, generationally speaking, I don't know how much work or what it would take for us as the Black community as Brown people to actually have that trust with police. Just because I yelled "Black Lives Matter" out of my car, I was followed to the laundromat by Officer E. Trevino, told me my tag did not, was not compliant. I knew that wasn't the case. When he found out that everything matched up, I was all of a sudden pleased to leave. This is instances that happen all the time in the areas that I live in, that are not South Tampa, that are not Central Heights, that's East Tampa, that's Ebor, right? And there's definitely a tale of two cities that's going on here. And so I am just echoing all of the support for folks who went before me. I apologize for not being as coherent with my thoughts, but I'm just really, really moved and touched, and unfortunately, in the wrong way, to listen and hear. Just, also just listening to the fact that we're here five years later. I was a part of the group that originally pushed for the civilian review board to get here in the first place. And even then, it didn't have teeth. Right now, we're just trying to get one little pegged tooth. So at least extend us that for the sake of building a stronger Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Maj, followed by Nina Tatlock. And then we have two people in person downstairs. That ends that, and we go into the recorded messages, which there are seven. Maj, if you're on, unmute yourself and go ahead, sir. All right, we'll hold that. Go to Nina Tatlock.
Maj Basai just unmuted himself.
Oh, he did? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, guys. Thank you for welcoming me into the 21st century here. I apologize. My name is Maj Basai, and some of you know me. I'd like to ask, are we a status quo city? If we are, then let's do what the police union wants. Are we a "that's just how things are" city? If so, then let's do what the police union wants. As Americans and Tampanians become more politically polarized online and in real life, we need to ask ourselves, are we a city that chooses to side with political extremism? If so, then let's do what the police union wants. The fact that police unions oppose independent public accountability by suggesting that the public will be inevitably biased against them is what we in the legal profession call "rest ipse loquit," that things speak for itself. They expect us to respect their judgment unconditionally, yet they have zero respect for the judgment of the public. Their opposition to an independent public oversight is itself evidence of their own prejudice against the people who they serve. The police union's contempt for the intellect and the character of community leaders cannot be more clear. Central to the premise of their argument against independence is that apparently cops assume we all hate cops. Well, then it's no wonder they treat us like this. This isn't just offensive to us, but it's logically absurd. Officer Portman, the PBA president, Danny Alvarez, another police union attorney, mentioned some police oversights that we currently have, such as the Brady List, body-worn cameras, et cetera. What they didn't mention was that they were originally opposed to all of those measures, too. What sound like common sense today in 2021 were opposed at the time as anti-cop attacks. I trust this city council. I trust you guys. And I call you guys because you're all men, which is a different conversation for a different day. Some of you know that I'm a defense attorney with 13 years of experience. I know that Councilman Goode's is a former cop. I know that Councilman Dingfelder is a former public defender. But we know, we all know what happens behind the scenes. Between the three of us, we know that there are some problems that need to be solved. And one of those problems is that cops, like us, are human and therefore sometimes flawed. The resistance to oversight is based on this flawed human emotion, like the perception of disrespect that many insecure people sometimes feel. In 2008, I was unlawfully arrested by an officer whose feelings I hurt, and this city council paid me thousands of dollars for it. 2015, the city attorney sent me a cease and desist letter threatening to sue me and file a bar complaint because she said some of her officers were offended by the language on my website suggesting that TPD has a reputation for civil rights offenses. Months later, the Tampa Bay Times published conclusive empirical data proving that the civil rights violations occurred during the Viking Wall Black Scam. That same year, in 2015, an officer named Scott Van Treest hogtied a Black woman like a dead animal and dragged her across the jail, dragged her across the ground at the jail like his prey. In 2020, the same TPD officer, Scott Van Treest, used a xenophobic racial trope against me personally online, then filed a formal bar, then filed a formal bar complaint against me for publishing his own racial trope. This is malicious, chilling behavior that's cost me personally thousands of dollars in my own attorney's fees. And I'm a lawyer. How much indignity must we take? So we, the people, must ask ourselves, has the status quo worked for us? No. Has the status quo worked for the police unions? You bet. The police union isn't going to like the changes like a more independent CRB, but their entire argument is absurdly, is premised on the fallacy that the public prejudged them as much as they prejudged us. They're dividing it into us versus them, but it isn't like that. And the union reps shouldn't irresponsibly magnify that accusation against the public. They are the public, too. They are, air quotes, us. Please, city council, resist this irrational absurdity. An independent CRB is not anti-cops, it's anti-fat cops. Reward the good cops and help the community solve problems before they come to a head. Show your courage, unite us, strengthen the CRB. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next is Nina Tatlock. That concludes our online speakers. Then we have two in person, then we conclude there. Go ahead, Nina Tatlock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Nina Tatlock. I want to thank you for letting me speak. And I want to ask that our city council members to please back a strong citizens' review board. The mayor should not have any appointments to this board. The board needs to have subpoena power to investigate complaints, and it needs to have an independent attorney, so there are no conflicts of interest. Please vote yes and support this strong citizens' review board. While I'm speaking, I would also like to ask that our city council support a strong cahoots program instead of sending police out to respond to mental health issues. There are too many times when police involvement in these mental health calls ends in devastating results. This is also why we need a very strong CRB. Please listen to the many, many citizens who are calling out for better processes in these regards. I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. That concludes the virtual speaker registration. We have two people down on the second floor. If you're here to speak for public comment, please approach the lectern.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Dorothy Oxkunas. I live in Ebor City. I had not expected to speak today, but I'm glad to. I don't have an emotional plea to you, but it's certainly heartfelt a little bit about myself and why I'm speaking. I'm 70 years old. And I was raised by the greatest generation right after World War II. The people that educated me in school on government were mostly veterans of World War II, and that made a great impact on my life as far as respect for the Constitution and living by the Constitution. So I bring two things with me. I live in a very underserved community and a lifetime of experience with police, having a son who studied criminal justice and entertained the thought of becoming involved with police. Now, as a person who appreciates the Constitution and the law of the land, what bothers me about what's going on now, although I appreciate the ACLU, I think they've done a lot of great things. But even Alan Dershowitz is going, who has worked with them so much and has done so much with them and for them, is distancing himself, is getting involved in very unconstitutional actions, such as subpoena right is not in our city council's constitution. In the law is the law. Now, living in an underserved community, and, you know, I heard some of the words of the people before me. Now, I come, my family comes from an immigration not too far in the distance past. And at that time, for my people, when the Ku Klux Klan burned the cross, it was for my people as well. I remember my family talking many times how they used to pull the sheets up over their head because they were afraid when they'd see the cross burning, and they knew it was for them. So I'm not completely callous to what some of the other people have said because those experiences have certainly left a mark with me, too. Now, I would never say the police or anybody or any group is free from error. Certainly, that happens. Mistakes happen. Bad things happen sometimes. Wrong things happen sometimes. But the overwhelming majority of the time, they, these are people who are doing very, very hard jobs, under very, very hard situations, and doing the very best they can. Now, that being said, I stand squarely behind the police union. And as a person who comes from the community that I now live in, I will say my appreciation has even upped more because I've had to call a few times for something as small as noise disturbance late in the night, you know, or whatever. And I'm going to tell you, I've been so impressed by the response, the kindness. And just like I said, in that whole neighborhood there, I have not seen, noticed, or at all, an oppressed, over policing, or anything like that. So I thank them. I want to take the opportunity to thank them at this point for making Tampa a very secure and desirable place to live.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, and thank you for your time.
Yes. We have one more speaker. Go ahead, please state your name.
Vicki Franklin. Born and raised Tampa, Florida, grew up with the police department. My husband's born and raised Tampa, Florida, grew up with the police department. I've worked with an organization with sheriffs in the police department. I totally respect them. We grew up where you respect the police, you respect law enforcement. And the kids nowadays do not. And you see it all the time. I was employed by Hillsborough County School, and they just, they don't teach it anymore. Parents don't teach it anymore. My thing is, we don't need extra government. We stand with the mayor on the fact that we support the police union. It's unconstitutional for them to have this proposal. I mean, a law's a law. Why do we need more enforcement, more government involved in with the police? I think they've done a darn good job. And I've been here 66 years. And I think they can handle themselves. They don't need, when you get outsiders in that don't know how the business is run, you're going to get more problems than you ever thought in your life. I think the union's doing a great job in having a son-in-law in police department and a daughter in sheriff's department. They don't need this hassle. They don't need this hassle. They need to be able to do their job and do it correctly, and I think most officers do. You're always going to have somebody who makes a mistake, but I think you all should leave them alone, let it go with the mayor, and support the police union 100%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes in-person and online public comment. Now we have seven recorded messages.
Hello, my name is Marty Fernandez. I live in Tampa. Address is 4949 Marbisa Drive, Apartment 1301, Tampa, Florida 33624, and I'm calling to object to the formation of a citizens' review board for the Tampa Police. I find this to be completely appalling, and actually, it is unconstitutional. The research that I've done, extensive research, compels me to decry that on 2017, the Florida Supreme Court ruled that such a board can compel officers to appear while under investigations because it violates the state's officer's Bill of Rights. So it is unconstitutional, it makes no sense, and it would place the police department not on the behalf of the people, we the people, but on behalf of special interests and special agenda groups that, in reality, have a specific motive, including defunding the police for their specific formation. So please make sure that you do not create an unnecessary and unconstitutional citizens' board under any kind of guise or any kind of group, special interest groups, as not only this is unconstitutional, but it's at the service to the citizens of the state. Thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing and for investigating this issue at length, like I have done, and make sure that the city and the citizens is placed first and foremost, and not any outsiders with special agendas that want to be brought into our state. Thank you very much, and again, I appreciate the work you guys are doing, and please take your time to research this ruling by the Supreme Court in 2017, and this is, this would be an unconstitutional citizens' board. Thanks again for your time and for the work you guys are doing. I appreciate it very much.
Good morning. This is Norma Reno. I'm calling because I want to please ask you to vote no to the creation of an unconstitutional citizens' review board, which is going to be led by the ACLU. Please vote no. This is unconstitutional, and it shouldn't happen. Thank you.
My name is Rose Marie Garcia-Getting, and I live at 4107 Westdale Avenue, Tampa, Florida 33609, and I am calling to speak in support of the changes being proposed by sidewalk stompers and walk bike Tampa. My neighborhood does not have consistent sidewalks, and with two small children, this is, you know, really a danger for us, as we're trying to get around the neighborhood, having to walk on the street for many portions, and the speed limit being 25 miles per hour cars are going by us at a very fast pace, and it, you know, it really saddens me that we can't enjoy the beautiful weather in a safe manner, and there are no parks within walking distance of my home either. So, you know, I really would like to see, within a safe walking distance, I should add, due to the sidewalk issue, so really like to see, speak in favor of the sidewalk stompers and walk bike Tampa proposal. Thank you.
Hello, I'm calling on behalf of the Fernandez family. We live in Tampa, Florida, and we are against the citizens' review board for the police. That is totally unconstitutional, and no group of citizens selected by any organization or by anyone should be meddling with government of we the people. We the people have separation of power for the protection of its citizens, and we do not need select a group of citizens reviewing government. It's totally unconstitutional. I do not approve it because it would be an unconstitutional law that would be immediately appealed.
Hello, this is Steven Perez. I live at 8449 South 12th Street, Towers of Channelside. I've had the misfortune of living directly above Park and Rec for the past two years that they have been open. I've lived here for five years. The noise is particularly bad every weekend, beginning on Thursday and going through Sunday evening. It starts around 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. with dumping a bass that resonates through my residence. The past weekend, Park and Rec had a DJ shouting through their amplified sound system. This woke me at 11:00 or 12:30 a.m. on Sunday morning and continued for quite some time. I did eventually call the Tampa Police Non-Emergency Line to file a complaint. In the past, we had to deal with similar disturbances from Asia and Ferg's Live. Both of these establishments closed, and the hope was that the replacements would be more suitable for the residential area. I've taken many actions to reduce the negative impact on my home, as I've installed noise-canceling devices and left the TV on to fall asleep. This is not an ideal way to live. I realize that some of us consider this area an entertainment area. We have Sparkman's Wharf and the Starship that both have musical entertainment. Sparksman's typically closes around 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Since Park and Rec is open until 3:00 a.m., many of the Sparkman Wharf crowds head to Park and Rec. The Starship stops playing music when they reach Davis and Harbor Islands. I'm asking that the council put measures in place that are reasonable and ensure the ability for Channelside and Waterside street residents and homeowners to live in peace. I would ask for the ability for our building management to have legal means to make Park and Rec redefined by the same building noise rules as the 200-plus residents in our two buildings. The building management can address noise generated by all of our neighbors except Park and Rec. The only relief I get is to go away for weekends. This is not sustainable. This is also starting to have a negative impact on my health, and I'd certainly like to have something done to take care of this. Thank you for your time.
Hello, this message is for the councilmen and councilwomen of the city of Tampa regarding the issue of creation of a citizens' review board for the police department. I've done extensive research. I live in the city of Tampa, and I would like to oppose the creation of such citizens' board due to its unconstitutionality and to the many conflicts that it presents to the police department and to the citizens locally that it serves. The creation of another review board is not only questionable and unconstitutional, but it actually defies the citizens' best interest as the police department has its own established chain of command and employee review department. To do another outside group, it's only going to present conflict of interest, and this particular group with a particular agenda will not serve the benefit of the local citizens of the city of Tampa and the state of Florida. The creation of such a board, in addition, bypasses legislation, therefore, the will of the people, and it is unconstitutional, in addition to violating the rights, the Bill of Rights of the police officers themselves. So there is a lot of different problems in the creation of such citizens' board, numerous problems, and I encourage you, as members of the city council, to do extensive research and look at the unconstitutionality of this idea and the catastrophe, catastrophical results that you will have in the local. Thank you very much for your time and for the work you guys are doing. It's much appreciated, and please say no to the creation of a special interest and
My name is Armando Yanez, and I live at 9728 North Armenia Avenue, Tampa, Florida. The reason for this message is I am against, and not in favor, of any other oversight over the police other than the one that they currently have. Therefore, I'm asking the council to reject the idea of trying to set up another oversight committee. Thank you very much.
Are those all the recorded comments? I believe they are. Okay. All right, that concludes public comment. Before we continue with the agenda, would anybody like a five-minute recess?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I would love one, but I think everybody knows AFT got struck down. I saw.
Really?
Yeah. I'll be making some motions on it, but, yeah, so four to one, $300 million gone a year, so. No, I don't know.
Mr. Councilman Viera, if you can, for the purposes of the public, AFT...
Oh, I'm sorry, all for transportation. Penny sales tax passed in November of 2018 by almost about 60% of voters, was just struck down by the Florida Supreme Court, four to one. So Ms. Zelman, looks like our issue is moot, isn't it? Unfortunately. But I'll be making some motions on it because we've got to get that tax back in 2022. That's terrible.
Without a doubt.
All right, five-minute recess.